You guys ready? You ready, Angie?
Yep.
Thank you and welcome to Cache County Planning Commission meeting for September 1st. We appreciate staff being here. So we have somebody to talk to. And we begin our meetings with opening remarks and tonight it's my turn. So I'm going to be reading a poem from local poet laureate Starkulbrook from her book, Both Sides From the Middle. So maybe we can all relate to this. It's called "Got Eight Hours." Sometimes I just want a good thing to go on and on. Having resolved the question of sleep, I reflect on rest, distant cousin of repose, kin to slumber. Daydreams encouraged, wander alight, observe, move only when the body says ready. Won't answer the phone unless I'm compelled to stretch out my voice box, put the receiver against my ear and say hello. Leave through a magazine, iron a couple of butterflies on my ink-stained shirt sleeves, as long as it doesn't violate my lazy day. Go to bed early, perhaps rested enough, I'll retrieve those dreams that disappeared years ago when someone in charge handed down the decree against sleep, hyped up our workday to nights and weekends. Client, the unrested prone to suggestion. Whatever happened to hanging around in a bathrobe, spending an entire afternoon in a hammock, slung between trees near a river? No wireless feeding tube. Dreams can be deferred intermittently, but that doesn't mean I can't get them back. Refreshed by sleep, reveling in lavish indolence, I aim to throw a wrench in the deprivation machine and find the rest of my life. So thank you for indulging me with that. Now I'd like to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Angie, no changes to our agenda?
I believe number five will be removed from the agenda correction.
Number five is going to be removed from tonight's agenda, commissioners. And that's it?
Yep.
Okay, so without objection, we'll approve tonight's agenda with number five removed. And then the minutes from our July 28th workshop as well as our August 4th meeting were provided. Anybody have any changes of substance in any of those? Okay, so without objection, then we'll adopt those minutes from those two meetings. Tonight on our agenda, it is 5:36, so we're in good shape there. We have three consent items. The West Edge Estate CUP, the 142 subdivision First Amendment, and then the Lee Nelson minor subdivision First Amendment. Hi, Lee Nelson. Good to see you. Former planning commissioner Lee Nelson was around when I started my 15-year tenure, if I'm not mistaken. So, welcome tonight. And so these are consent items, which means they meet all the requirements of the county. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments on any of these consent item agenda? Consent agenda items? Okay, no questions. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions on any of the consent item? Okay. Well, I would accept a motion to approve the three consent items.
So moved.
Second?
So we have a motion and a second to approve the three consent items. Any further discussion?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed? Okay, those are hereby passed. And then our regular action item tonight then is the public hearing for the Cache County General Plan. And so we'll start with a staff update perhaps, or a report before we actually open the public hearing.
It's on the screen in just a moment. And there it is. All right, well, I would like to share. I'm sure we have power on this.
All right, well, I'll just walk you through some of the major changes and also provide just general summary of this document and its purpose and some of the details that draw contrast between different growth options for the future, not just for county unincorporated area, but this is intended to provide perspective and useful reference point for the communities throughout Cache County as a countywide urban and rural assessment. And with that is a cost of services analysis for alternative development patterns.
Do we have anything in our packet tonight relative to this?
Added Monday evening.
Oh, I missed it.
I'm sorry. And there was an attempt to email you that it was in there and it didn't make it out of my...
Did you guys send it with an email or is it just in our?
It's just in there.
You can go to that same link.
It's this folder right there.
Oh. Thank you.
Okay, and so this is acknowledging that the county will grow to, is projected to grow to more than the figures listed here, but for a horizon, what we would consider to be a long-range horizon, but attainable and within, you know, in terms of near-term, midterm decisions leading to long-term outcomes. This is a projection to the year 2040 when KMC Gardner Institute projects 137, our current population of 137 increasing to about 186,000 for 48,000 new residents. They project with that 22,100 new households and about 43,600 new employees. And that's quite a bit, and that's quite a bit to plan for. And so there's opportunity to contemplate how that growth occurs and how do we meet the housing market demand and what is the housing market demand? What percentage of the population want to live in a rural area on a large lot versus maybe want to but can only afford to live in a more urban area on a smaller lot or even a townhome? And these questions more than ever are really demanding attention and discussion as the housing cost increases are going up and have been going up rapidly, even if declining somewhat in terms of the upward trend in recent months, but nonetheless, less attainable housing for many than has been previous. So those are some of the figures and details that are gathered in terms of the increase in housing demand and the cost and the supply and the need for substantial new units to address the current and future demand.
I get that it's going up every year. I'm surprised that the rate decreases every year or every decade, that the rate of increase decreases.
The rate of increase, well, and we do need that 2022, some more data of 2022 will, I think, help draw that trend line better, but when I refer to a slight decrease, it's, you know, 2020 and 2021, it was going up sharply and maybe just this past several months, it's still going up but not as sharply.
Right, but the gray line up there.
Oh, the gray line, I'm sorry.
Bars.
Whoops. Right, the percent change...
That's what surprises me is the percent change goes down.
Yeah, and that relates to the household size dropping, the family size getting smaller. Yeah, average family size and aging population, it's very much related to that. Sorry, misunderstood your comment at first.
And I think when you get out that far too, it's a pretty good guess, isn't it? It seems like, I mean, if you look at the last 20 years, what they thought they were going to be and what they were, it wasn't anything close to what they would have projected 40 years ago.
Yeah.
I think the decade in front of us, they're pretty accurate and maybe two, but if you look, if you go back in any of the KMC Gardner stuff, when you get past two decades, you seem like they're, they're not as accurate, of course, because it's a pretty good guess at that point.
Yeah, and these do need to be updated, correct. And by the way, this chart was added by request of Councilmember Worthing. She asked for somewhat of a perspective of the past and the future and not just the current 2022 to 2040. So this broadens the perspective and gives some context there. All right. And then this we found to be a helpful reference in terms of where the focus area is. It's more the Cache Valley area where the orange represents the, more the farmland, agriculture, and irrigation and existing cities and services and water. That's where we anticipate the development and therefore that's more the focus of this assessment is where the growth is likely to occur. And so that's been a helpful reference from the USDA in terms of the Cache County Resource Assessment Map. And then this is the same discussion as before, as defining rural areas versus urban areas, it can vary. And the rate and pace at which urban growth expands may determine the timing that rural areas are impacted. And rural areas might be a low density in form of large lots, or they might be a low density in the form of clustered smaller lots with more open space preserved. And there's choices that the county has and cities have in working together for their growth patterns. And there are cost implications in terms of the infrastructure, the water use, along with what types of housing needs should be met. How does this relate to economic development in terms of providing housing for the employees, the jobs that companies want to provide to grow? A lot of ideas here and questions setting up regional collaborative discussion points. And then we get to the scenarios. Three scenarios that have been under development in the development of this cost of services planning model or growth projection model. I will state that Appendix A, if anybody read that cover to cover, which you may not have, was being documented as the model was being developed and tested and refined. And so the outputs of the model are summarized in this front 18 or 20 pages, whereas Appendix A currently needs to be updated, full disclosure, in terms of the technical description of it and the assumptions made in it to match where the final model landed in terms of its operation and the outputs. So that, Appendix A requires some technical touch-up to reflect and be consistent with Appendix A, but the scope of it would not change in terms of if you were to approve or recommend that this pass on to council for their consideration, it would need the correctness and clarity edits, especially to Appendix A. Appendix B is more of a standalone cost of services model that relates more to the unincorporated areas of Cache County, which was a helpful analysis by Susie Becker with Zions Bank Corporation. And she provided many useful indicators that should feed into the countywide cost of services model. So Appendix A and B reflect the roll-up-your-sleeves, work-together, build the model, and then inform this report that you're looking through now. And then we get to a quick summary of the scenarios. And what you did not see last time that you see now is a more refined version of at least a visual depiction of the land use patterns that would best express the numeric side of the growth projections, the actual acres developed and how far spread out in relative terms the development is, and therefore how many road and utility miles are needed to service the homes, to provide access to the homes. And so this is not the full acreage of the modeling, but it, in terms of visual purposes, represents maybe just under half of the acreage, but provides some perspective of how growth from existing communities might expand outward from those existing communities and occur in unincorporated areas. And generally, what you see is a more expansive growth scenario where single-family dwellings are an average of 3.3 units per acre in the cities and very low density in the county unincorporated areas. And it's more of assumption of less of clustered and transfer development, but more of the larger lots in the county, assuming that they rezone to more of a five-acre or three-acre, two-acre kind of configuration. And overall, with average lot sizes being larger, you have more water use in this scenario, 356 gallons per day compared to scenario two and three. Scenario two is more of a clustered development concept where the single-family dwellings in cities and towns is very similar to scenario one, but in the county unincorporated area, it's assumed that there's more of an incentive, a density bonus to encourage ag preservation, agricultural remainders. But there's perhaps less emphasis on the where and the how, and so you see somewhat of a random placement of agriculture, and that's somewhat what we have now. And I will state that there's a little bit of the potentials of voluntary agricultural clustering and ag remainders in scenario one, but it's a smaller amount, as we'll see in some of the tables. And then scenario three is quite different in that the average single-family density of homes and cities and towns is three and a half units per acre. I'm thinking maybe I've got the four and a half.
Later it says three and a half.
Yeah, I mean, maybe I got those backwards. I'm going to have to double-check that. I will double-check that. But it is, on the average, more compact. It's a general notion that the average home buyer needs something at a lower cost point and therefore they need smaller lots. And yet there's still options for larger lots. And, you know, probably presumably the further out away from cities you go, then you'd have more of those rural larger lots, but less than in scenario two and one. And so as you would expect, the infrastructure length of roads and utilities reduces, as does water use, per resident, per capita.
Can I ask a question to clarify on that?
Sure.
On water use? So we say utilizes 356 gallons per day. Is that per unit, per acre, or what's the, what is the unit that we're talking about?
Really good question, and I'll jump ahead just to, whenever you see red text up on the screen, it's where I've added since this packet was placed for your access in the shared drive. But here, I've clarified that it's gallons per day, per person, and that needs to be more clear in the table we were just looking at.
And just a follow-up to that, in each of these, each of these scenarios, are we assuming the same level of overall development, the same number of additional units? It's just the things we've changed? It's just the density and how it's spatially divided or spread out?
That's correct, and that's where this new graph comes in, in an effort to display just that. And so what you're looking at is a predominance of, the predominant land use type is single-family residential, or at least for commercial, well, I should say, development is predominantly single-family residential. And in comparative terms, you see an increase of multifamily and townhome from scenario one to two to three. But I think what's interesting and was worth noting here is that even though there's an increase there, in terms of overall percentage of development, it's relatively low compared to the rest of development. So I think that might be a helpful perspective for cities as they struggle with conversations about densities, to think, well, maybe we're just looking at less than 10% of our, not the city, but future growth, less than 10% as more compact townhomes, mixed-use development, apartments, as a minority of the development type.
So, sorry, I'm getting into some...
Fine.
And we all want a short meeting tonight, but how do you, how do you go, I mean, if we say we want less than 10% of that, and we build a plan around something like this, how do we, I mean, there's not a way that we can say, we've reached our 10%, no more?
That's a really good question, and I appreciate these questions. And I think these are the, these questions are the substance of how to have meaningful conversations moving forward through regional collaboration. And one detail that I share, that we share in this assessment of the scenarios is under this topic of, so a scenario assessment, housing costs on page 10 suggests that additional study is recommended as a follow-up to this assessment to understand area median income as it relates to the growth of industries and jobs in Cache County. So I don't think we know that right now. What mix of housing types and what price points can be afforded or needed for those that would like to stay and live here or move and live here and fill the jobs that companies would like filled? And frankly, cities and counties and all of us need fill. And so that's really a recommendation here, and that could be listed at the end of this report as one of the conclusions, is this is a follow-up study that would be helpful and meaningful and continuation of this type of study.
Because, you know, I like the concept that we have here, and yeah, I think it's great as a goal, but how do you put on the brakes if, hey, it's working here and this is a type of development where developers are able to make significant money on it, how do you put on the brakes there? There has to be some sort of limiting factor in there. And so I get to your third scenario where that may come in, and that might be your explanation there?
Interesting, you point out the third scenario where it invites cities to consider, and even the county to consider, not just creating higher density or more moderate and higher densities compared to lower density forms of development, but to have that occur with a land conservation or preservation element in mind, such that if developer wants 10 to 20 or more units per acre, maybe some of that is a windfall rezone, but maybe some of that is an investment in open space in the region. And, yeah.
You have a certain, I mean, we could quantify right now, we have X number of acres of A-10 in the valley, so we have, divide that by 10, divide the acreage by 10, and then we have a theoretical, you could put this many units, realizing there's all kinds of, all kinds of other factors that go into that. And that's your starting point, and then you say, is there a percentage factor that we want to add from that? And you base your zoning on that, where we rezone to a higher density and say, from the 10,000-unit potential that we have, whatever that number ends up being, we want to add 10% high-density to that anyway?
Yeah, it's about maybe incentives through density bonus incentives, that if there's shaping of development and increasing development, that there's, density becomes somewhat of a tradable commodity with incentive. And then the question is, how to do it in a configuration that has the best long-term outcome?
And this is my last comment.
Oh, sure.
And I'm going to be quiet. In the scenarios, as I looked at that, I thought, this looks, you know, I like the concept, if we had a blank slate to work from, but that's not really where we're starting from. We have a certain level of development throughout the valley and we can't really just start with thinking that we have a blank slate. We have cluster development already in certain parts of the valley. How does that, how does that fit into this?
Yeah.
And we have all different sizes of parcels as well.
That's a really good point. I think that to acknowledge, this depicts a little more of a blank slate outside of cities when in reality there would be homes here and there, right? But in relative terms, Cache Valley unincorporated area just outside of cities and well away from cities does have a fair amount of agricultural and vacant land to consider applying these different principles and techniques to. And then as we referred to the general plan a few weeks ago and looked at the future land use map, there are very large anticipated annexation areas around some communities, some of which may not achieve that much expansion. They may not have the water resources or the financial means, and yet there's, that does reflect an interest to, I don't want to use the word control, but influence how growth occurs around them and next to them. And so I think that's in part what this sets up, is how could collaboration and exploration of growth around Wellsville or Mendon or Hyrum make the most sense? And this is a toolkit to start to explore some of those notions, and should the county ever get into the business of setting up special service districts for public water systems and establish more remote villages and small towns that are surrounded by green belts? I mean, that's kind of an interesting prospect, and in the general plan, we're not saying that is our policy, but we're at least suggesting that that could be further studied and explored.
You bet. Thanks for the good questions. I think that's a decent point to just invite any other questions, and I can jump around and maybe answer with some of the tables and figures and report.
This is, Jason's been asking these questions. I was kind of thinking myself, because we think like our meeting, last meeting, when we had the applicant come in to purchase the land west, southwest of Smithfield, with the desire to come in and change that from an A-10 to an R-2, and the neighbors next to him expressed, well, hey, we're going to do the same thing right after. So as a property owner, how do we follow through with a plan such as this respecting the property rights, though? How do we decide, okay, so this section of the valley is going to be chosen for further expansion and this section of the valley is not? How do we, how can we legally enforce that?
It's a really good question. I'll share some thoughts that have come to me in preparing this, and it's not to say that this is the policy recommendation of this study, but it's the sort of new perspective that comes when looking through future lenses such as these. And so looking at this transferred growth scenario pattern, and when I look at the lowlands with higher water tables and more floodplains and wetlands, or further away from the expanding, the outward expansion of utilities and infrastructure, that's really what this is depicting. Whether intentional or not, it's showing that those areas are prioritized for preservation. And then you see kind of this hatched darker green area as land that might be more of a, hey, maybe this continues to grow here, but maybe there's a minimum prioritization of land preservation that protects those riparian corridors and the farmland associated with it, and areas that tend to be more sensitive, and maybe where there's even potential for an old rail corridor to become a trail someday, and there's a density bonus incentive for cluster development with a trail. And so I think one of the discoveries for me, Brady, that I was not expecting to find in this process was what's illustrated here in this table. And that is more efficient development not only invites the opportunity for significant and meaningful land preservation, but also puts less pressure on land and reserves it for more development for the next 20, 30, 40 years. And so your question... And so your question's a good one, and it's, I think we're just reaching a point of having a better perspective of how to talk about where the prioritization should be, and the where and the how. But that's just some of my perspective that I've gained.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of your answer, though, too, is, you know, it's not going to be something that's forced on landowners. It's going to be a scenario where you incentivize them to implement these kinds of tools or ideas, and the county invests in, you know, coming up with the ordinances that would allow for more innovative development that would incentivize landowners to go that direction, but it wouldn't be forced on anyone more incentive-driven than it is mandate. It's options.
Market-driven.
Market-driven. If we could play God for one day, it would definitely be a nice direction for the county to go for leaving the open space and the separation, but that was just my question.
No, I think you're right. I think we ask the majority of the county, they would say, yeah, this is the way we want to go, and how do we get there? That's forthcoming, I would hope.
What I would like to share also on this topic is some very meaningful conversations that we've been having with property owners. And I hope some of them show up to the council hearing. They, we're broadening and trying to push more the invitation to come and comment at the plan, at the council hearing. And then I'm reaching out specifically to some families and owners of farmland with pretty substantial holdings that have called in saying, hey, we'd like to explore some development on our land, but we'd also like to do, you know, keep our farm. And and so when we share some of these concepts that have been contemplated in the general plan, they're pretty intrigued. And some of them have enough land holdings that they could cluster and transfer between their own properties and do something very, very meaningful. And so they're, they're very aware of this, and they're invited to come and comment. We'll see how that goes.
Question?
Yes.
So when you're talking about clustering and everything else, does the amount of homes that they're clustering depend on the size of the land that they're bringing down? Because then do you change zoning for where they're putting the houses? For instance, I have 100 acres, so the maximum I'm allowed to cluster in an A-10 would be 10 homes in a concentric area? And if that's so, does that change the zoning of where those 10 homes go? Or are you saying that the rest of that 100 acres stays out? Because back to Brady's point, we do get to listen to public clamor on rezones, and that's what helped on the Wellsville one and the city coming, and also was the last one up in Smithfield, because you do get to listen to public clamor on rezones. So I have a question of when you're clustering, are you taking into consideration the scope and size of the land to begin with? And then you leave it A-10, or are you going to bring it down to a different zone when they cluster? Do you see what I mean?
Yeah. That's a great question, and I would definitely think the scale of the property.
It would have to be thought of if you start in A-10, I would think.
Yeah. And so two comments, as I consider your good question. And one is, it seems that the scale could reduce controversy if where the development ends up is further away from those who already live around and nearby, that there could be perhaps less concern and expressions of opposition. And yet, there might also be recognition of, hey, there's development, which I tend not to like, but I do like the idea of that farmland remaining as well. So, you know, we saw, I think it was near Clarkston. Who was the rezon out there, the?
The one on the edge, the edge of Newton?
Yeah, Newton. That was.
Griffin.
Griffins, by the Catlark.
Anyway, they, they, they wanted to build in a cluster configuration and keep farming the remaining dozen or so acres of irrigated ag land. If you reproduce that and you have pocket of lots in one corner, and that happens in four different places, you end up with 40-plus acres of contiguous farmland with clusters of homes, and that's, that's a low-density rural type of development. But I think also, Nolan, what's key here is to depart from the controversy of rezoning to the five or the two acre and go more to a, an overlay or a density bonus in the A-10 that says, you can achieve up to X percent density bonus, and it might be design-based. The better the design and the performance of it, you can achieve even a higher density bonus. And so A-10 is a base of 10-acre net, but then it starts to have incentives and density bonus structures in place to create and incentivize those land use patterns. And then the key that we've heard a lot of questions about is how do you keep that open space, open space? And that's where I think the tools such as conservation easements.
Cluster to a farmhouse because it's thereby a road for another farmer, then open space just lost its meaning for the contingent, for the adjacent landowner to where the clustering is going.
In a direct sense, yes, and maybe they're moving on anyway at that point, but it's, and all that, and maybe so they locate the cluster elsewhere. So.
So, the thing is, is like, right now, Nolan, there is clustering happening. In your scenario, you know, we see proposals come to us all the time that has the base density of A-10, and when somebody wants to subdivide, they're not subdividing into 10-acre lots, you know, they're subdivi- the existing ordinance allows you to go down to half an acre, and a lot of them keep like an acre or so, but, and then there's, and then there's the ag remainder. So, I mean, without incentives, it's happening now. And, you know, to me, the question with looking forward is, as Tim's suggesting, do we want to find ways to incentivize that a little bit to get, to make it even better than it's already happening? Because the market's driving that now. Nobody wants to, you know, build a bunch of roads to houses on 10-acre lots, you know, they'd rather condense them and put the houses right along the existing road and not build any road, just build driveways.
I think depending upon the circumstances, the only concern I have, though, there is, I think there's some ulterior motives. And when we first started with that, I thought the ag remainder was protected. I didn't think it could be touched again. But basically, it's just buying them green belt status until they can develop it even more.
Yeah, but you still can't change the base zoning. You have to rezone. So, I mean, yeah, we see proposals come to us all the time where they're tweaking something, oh, I'm going to add, now I'm going to add another lot. It doesn't change the base zoning. It's still one unit per 10 acres. Or they want to reconfigure it because they figured out whatever layout they did initially doesn't quite work as well as, as they want. So the ag remainder is still there, but it's not preserved. That's right.
That's, that's my guess.
I think that Tim, so correct me if I'm wrong, so the way I see two of the scenarios you're suggesting is that same 100-acre piece, currently you could get 10 lots on that. They could be, they could be 10 half-acre lots or 10 10-acre lots. That, that just sails right through because there's, you know, no zoning to go with it. If, if you wanted to incentivize clustering, they might get a 20% bonus. So maybe you give them 12 lots on that same 100 acres. If you want to incentivize clustering and preservation, you might give them 15 lots if they put that remaining 80 acres into an easement of some sort. And they could get other funding to pay that, for that easement along with it. But is that kind of what you're saying is?
That's a creative.
Some sort of bonus for each of those levels of, of density if you're going to cluster?
Yep, and maybe it's the percentage of land preserved, that the higher that percentage, then
More lots.
You get a density bonus, and that incentivizes smaller lots and that more open space preservation. So there's a lot of different creative approaches there.
To address Brady's concern, under that scenario, though, there'd have to be, whether it's an easement or some other mechanism of saying, hey, that ag remainder
Even if it gets rezoned.
Is going to stay the way it is. It's not going to be chopped up in some other method or form later down the road.
Now, I will just add a new layer to this. And that is during the joint workshop between council and commission, I think it was March, there were some questions about what if ag land is, gets too much development pressure on it, and it's maybe not the best position and placement? And I'm showing some of, you know, the green pieces here in the path of growth and development. You know, compared to ag land that's out here, which would be probably much of that farmed anyway, out of the reach of development. And one concept is that there could be a clause that, at least in certain area, near, nearer and closer to development, that if that farmland is ever developed, then maybe it would need to purchase development rights from elsewhere to save land elsewhere. So it kind of keeps that balance of development and preservation in mind towards the vision.
You might have already said it, and I might have missed it, but if you go to that third option, the transferred growth scenario, what are you envisioning? Like, so on any of these three, on the left side of that, like, how, how many homes is that?
Let me jump to the table.
And while you're pulling it up, the only reason I ask is, prior to most of our times, the county approved that deal that they got out in Petersboro. And ever since then, all we hear is what a disaster. So why do we want to do that?
Well, water's definitely a consideration, and and maybe we learn from that, and we set up design criteria and what, what the ideal cluster subdivision looks like.
But if you cluster, and I know you're still going to tell us the homes, but and then you got to come in, you got to have a water system. So I guess that creates another question. Are we wanting to create more cities?
Well, there's, there's cities, towns, villages, hamlets. There's a whole range, like, there could be just little, I'll call it a hamlet, but just a grouping of homes that looks like a community, but it's not the, might be.
Incorporated.
Yeah, it's just a small little place, but, but here's your numbers, Brady. Tried to list the acres and the units for perspective. Do you see more single-family homes and more acreage in scenario one compared to two and three? But it's interesting in scenario three to see the increase of units in townhomes and multifamily, but the required acreage is substantially less. And that's much of what the market's looking for, is just, we want a place to start out and start to get some homeownership some way, somehow.
I hope we're not fostering more HOAs, because part of the problem in Petersboro is that it's an HOA. I just got three nasty emails today about frickin' roads and culverts, and I'm like, I can't do a thing about it because it's an HOA. And yet, the HOAs fall apart, and it causes problems.
Yeah, and you know.
And it's stanchit, west of Smithfield.
Exactly. So if you're clustering, I hope that doesn't mean I get bypass of roads and all the other things by throwing an HOA on it.
Well.
These are tough, because, yeah, I mean, 30-year, you know, they have, they keep their HOA fees low for the residents, because everything seems great. 30 years down the road.
They weren't funding.
Their roads are really crappy, but they don't have any money to replace it. So they donate their roads to the city or the county.
And it's not even 30 years, it's 30 months. You don't have a president or a secretary or a board or anything, and they're screaming at each other.
Nolan, so I'm just curious, like, what, what, you, you mentioned the Mendon and the southwest Smithfield items. So what, what, I haven't been reading the paper. What, what happened on those? A lot of times, we don't hear back what happens with the stuff we pass along.
Virtually everything you guys put before the council, we follow you.
Yeah.
Everything. The only thing that's not followed you is when we faced the road issue, and that was, and I disagreed with that, but it was legal side, so. The council puts a lot of respect to what you guys put in the.
Rezon for Mendon and the rezone for Smithfield, you also declined those?
Yep.
What about the one that we were half and half?
Um.
Was it half and half on what?
That was the Richmond one.
Yes, and we.
At the county side.
Decided.
They upheld denial.
It was denial, so.
Staff went out on a limb a little bit, and we, we learned from that one. But I will say this regarding HOAs, that we see them currently, that whenever they do a private road, which they tend to do currently, or, you know, shared retention or retention pond, so they're, I think the best way for those to transition to something more feasible, I suppose, would be public roads, which we hear from our roads department and public works department, that the more continuous roads are, the more useful they are for public purposes, and the easier it is to maintain. And so, and so that grid connectivity is, is important when considering future development patterns and taking on a public.
Part of that road manual is that if you have five homes, then they got to meet county guidelines.
Meet the guidelines, but there's still, they can still be a private road.
Exactly.
But that could be changed in the future. We could work on the county road.
It could.
I mean, some HOAs are good, but, but I just worry that if clustering means, oh, I get an HOA, and then I can keep costs down even more. So I'm just, I don't know how you control that.
But if we ever get to group wells, then a district would be helpful to maintain group wells and monitor them rather than an HOA, but anyway.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see HOAs being part of that picture for clustering, but, you know.
That's one of the things, I think we have to, of course, I've heard, I've heard so much about clustering over the last few months. When I think of clustering, that's what I'm, you know, that's what I'm kind of, the mental block I'm having is we have these clusters here, clusters here, how do we ser-, how do we service those clusters? That's, that's the problem I think we're having. You know, with the clustering idea is, how do we service those clusters? Because they're, you know, a cluster is spread out.
County doesn't want to be a service person to those, so we're going to rely on.
You still have miles of road to get to each of those clusters.
And, and an important point is, not all parcels are created equally. I mean, we can't just say, this is, you know, this is where we, we want development to go. The market has a lot to say in, in that, and it may not be that parcel that we think this is where it should happen.
Leave them in the center open.
Yeah, it may be, well, there's a really great part, there's a really great parcel out there that makes a lot of, you know, has a great view. And for whatever reason, that's, that's where our, our development's going to go.
And Brandon, that's a good question, and something I've learned in a perspective helpful to me is that, you know, the roads are already being maintained countywide. And the snow plows and the maintenance is going to every, well, not everywhere in the county, but far reaches in the county. And that's where development tends to be more feasible. So whether it's larger lot or cluster, if they can find the water and produce the water and meet county standards, then there is already services, it's just now how far did the services extend beyond where they're already extending and how? And so they're, I think relatively, they are, in relative terms, they are serviceable, but there's a less ideal and a more ideal way for that to occur.
I think most, most of the subdivisions that come before us that are clustered are are on existing roads.
Yeah.
And I think those are becoming a rarity throughout the county. Those areas have been.
That are readily developed or have been developed. I mean, we're getting to that point where we're taking the, part of what we're looking at is this next step. How do we address those next areas outside of these? Is clustering part of that? Because I, I'm, from the, part of the county that I'm looking at, the roads are substandard.
Where, you know, I'm looking at the roads that are out in these rural areas that we're talking about, I'm not seeing the roads to support, you know, western Richmond, for example, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an option just because the road standards aren't there.
I will share, we spoke with a landowner in Richmond, and as a one-off, it was too remote and far away to get to. But if that owner plus other owners start to look at their land collectively, then improving roads and master planning their properties and finding that right balance between development and preservation becomes, so I think there could be incentive to produce better, more meaningful designs where owners do less one-offs and more cooperative efforts, coordinated efforts.
The big picture is, is we need to change a little bit from just A-10, A-R-5, and RU-2 going forward and look at some other ideas and have other options out there, really countywide, and not, I think to Brady's point, not to pick one area of the county that we want to do it in. It could be open to any landowner that comes in with, with a proposal that meets all the new standards that you put in, in the zoning changes.
And that's when images put before people who are members of the public that have taken the survey and responded, they tend to favor the these new ideas, these new approaches.
So, I don't, I don't want to keep talking. I need to be like Jason and shut up, but here's the reality of the whole thing. If you want to farm, and if you want to keep the land open, you've either got to inherit it or have somebody gift it to you or something else, because you cannot afford to, I mean, for us to incentivize or whatever else, I don't know, you just, agriculture and that Smithfield example last week, I've heard, or last month, I've heard from so many people since then. There was many people. There was many people that tried to put in offers on that land or that was interested in that land for ag. But they could not justify nor afford to pay what the individual that purchased it did. And so then he thinks, but because he paid that big price for it, the way he's going to do that's come in here and split it up. Well, it didn't happen. But again, I don't know, I guess the point I'm making is, is if the ag part of Cash Valley wants to continue to do ag and, and other people that aren't out of ag think they want open space, something's got to happen to financially make it feasible because when you're trying to farm or even when you're looking at retiring, are you going to sell it to your neighbor for seven thousand an acre? Or are you going to sell it to this developer for fifty thousand an acre?
Great question. I, I bring this image up for discussion is that once clustered or transferred, the lots are worth a lot where the homes are. Those are expensive and high dollar items. They preserved open space.
Now I don't have a low income house.
Well, but in a future meeting, we can talk about accessory dwelling units, right? And home-based apartments and those types of things that, that provide opportunities. But this remaining green area that is not further developable is no longer worth hundreds of thousands of dollars per acre. It's worth ag value, which someone could afford to buy or lease and continue in agriculture.
Point though, I mean, if, if there was a TDR similar type program, then a farmer or landowner who wants to keep the farm and afford to, afford to do it can sell off those development.
Retire.
Yeah, exactly. Sell off those development rights and let that development go to a place where it makes more sense.
Discussion that we had on live, a, a time-based expiring transfer of development rights, I think was the, was the key really to, to help that work that, you know, we put a twenty or thirty year sunset on that. So, so if it, once you get to that point, well, that expires and then we redevelop or then we, then we re-envision the, the whole place because we'll be in a different place in thirty years.
See, one thing we're saying from the council is though, just like what Brady pointed out, is now we're hearing for somebody who goes and buys that land, pays that price and then they're ticked off because they don't get to make money from it. And our point is buyer beware. We cannot guarantee that you make money off of buying your land. So that gets back to the point that we do have a P and Z commission that helps and watches those type of things because under zoning, landowners and adjacent landowners and the public have some say-so in that.
Yep.
And I still say that as we talk about clustering and everything else, there is still a market for somebody who wants to go out and buy a ten acre lot or a twenty acre lot and put their house in the middle and stay there. There's a lot of people who are ready to do that. So.
And any of these options leave all those open.
Exactly.
Yep.
You can do them all in any of those scenarios.
That's right.
Other questions for, for Tim?
Did you guys give any weight to what the water resource guy told us, Mr. Akins, when he was here for that joint meeting, that as we look at these clusters, that maybe there's a consideration that if you're going to cluster, that you have to prove that there is water there to provide for those many houses. I mean, if you go out into Cash Junction or somewhere out there, I don't know that you're going to have the ability to do that in clustering without identifying that you can prove there's water there first.
That's a really good point. And if, if it's not in kind of this section of considerations and, you know, discussion points, then it needs to be because, for example, when we talk about achieving a density bonus, probably need to do a lot of study beforehand to demonstrate the quality of the design, the feasibility of the design, the water.
Yeah, because if I hear bonus, I'm going to say, yep, let's, let's work it.
Show us the water. Yep. I think it's a great point.
One thought that's been going through my mind as we've discussed is would there be an option, you know, we have non-developable, we have, we have, you know, there's steep slopes and all of those things. I wonder about a zone. So we know the west side of the valley has, has challenges with getting adequate water there. I wonder about an overlay or I don't, I don't even know what the tool would be that we would use, but there could be areas that would be, that would be limited based on availability of water, just as a, as a general, and they would have to prove up their ability to provide water there. Other zones I was thinking of is, you know, we had issues in Millville with, with septic systems. We clustered in Millville and then we had nitrate problems and, and, you know, maybe that's something of concern as well. That smart people that can determine soil types and all of those things would be able to tell us, this is an area where we shouldn't cluster a lot of, a lot of development there because it'll have impacts on groundwater or those types.
Or a dip.
That's a very good point. You put thirty septic tanks in one area.
Yeah.
You're going to be wondering about something.
And.
Based on what the soil.
And what, you know, is there a level at which, a level at which we say, if you want more development in this area.
Build a facility.
You've got to build a facility or, or you have to build, or you have to provide a public water system because of the amount of impact that you're putting on this specific part of the valley. And I know that's a whole additional level, but maybe that's where we need to eventually get.
But it makes the P and Z part job easier to say, you know what, you've got to do a study here versus.
Yeah.
Well, the campground, right? Because we thought it was fine to have fifteen or thirty up there. And the state said, no, if you have even two, you have to have a whole system.
But, but you know, as we look at this clustering bonus, there are big parcels on the west side of the valley that you could look at that and say, wow, I can go out there and, and.
They could put a mini Minden out there.
And, and build a mini Minden in Petersburg or in between Cash Junction and, and Petersburg. If, but if we, if we cluster a lot in that area, that's going to be a problem for a number of reasons. Water, potentially sewer, but it's way out there as well. So provision of services. So I think those are important things that we could, that we could add into the overall equation.
Yes. And to that point, in some of these concept considerations, there is the notion of when does service districts kick in? When is a group septic system that the water can actually, that's fluent can actually be used in a type of open space? And further separated from a public water system that those would require special service districts, probably that the county sponsored, but that's, so at least those ideas start to come into possible future consideration.
Wait a minute. Did you say county sponsors a special service?
Could. It, it.
I don't think we have any desire of those.
Okay.
At least from my side.
Maybe I stated that wrong, Nate. How do I state that?
I'm like.
Are you doing it on garbage site right now?
Well, that's a mess.
There could be some water systems set up.
Yeah. I mean, we already have.
Probably by the water district.
I will correct my statement to say.
My community Benson has a special service district for water provision. So, you know, we have, we have a system there. We don't have to worry about wells. The limiting factor.
Anything's for sale for the right.
In my neighborhood is the, the special surface district has a certain amount of growth that they allow each year, expansion in their system. And a district like that could potentially be one of those tools to, to determine how.
There's several districts.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of different ones.
I'll withdraw my statement. It just somehow.
After hearing garbage and all this up last few weeks, I'm like, I don't want to see no more districts.
All right. But the, yeah.
I don't want the county to go through.
So, go ahead.
Maybe, I don't know if I've been paying attention really well, but I guess I've been thinking about roads a lot. That's the most expensive thing for us in our city is roads. And we've had a lot that are thirty and forty years old that really need to be replaced. And we really don't have the money to replace what we already have in. And so like from Strong Towns, you know, Charles Moreland has said, like, infrastructure is simply defined as an expansion of wealth. And so infrastructure, if expanding that infrastructure doesn't expand your wealth, then it's conceptive spending. You know, you don't really want to do it that way. And so as we approve or subdivisions come before us or more houses, I guess we should be looking at, is it on a major road already? If it has to be on this other private road, then no, we don't want to do it? Or because that private road will eventually turn into a public road?
Maybe you do it, maybe, maybe the county for, for development does like most cities and there's an impact fee that's associated with that based off the cost of services. So if you would get a building permit in the county, there's, there may be an impact fee like cities charge. The county's currently don't do that.
County doesn't have that cap fees, right?
No, I appreciate your question because I, I brought this table up and I am remembering this as a public hearing, but the.
We haven't opened the public hearing.
Not yet a public.
We're having a staff presentation right now.
Staff presentation. But these ratios, I think, start to shed light on the resources available to take care of the new infrastructure and the aging infrastructure. And so, for example, total acres developed and then the average tax revenues per acre, the more expansive the development, the less per acre in revenues. The less expand, or the more compact, the more revenues are collected. And then you see the total residents of per road mile. So these are just indicators of growth efficiency.
But is this assuming all new road miles built for that?
For this?
Yes. That would be saying we're not going to use any existing road infrastructure. Everything's new.
But it's the same principle as existing growth. And this doesn't even explore infill development in existing communities, which so, but it's just the notion of efficient use of infrastructure, that it is costly and therefore the, the more tax revenues that come in per acre and the less road miles to service, the easier it is to bear that burden.
In some of the interesting components of the, the Zion's analyses, appendix A and B are that, you know, cost per thousand population of road miles is quite a bit more expensive in county than it is in the city. And so, you know, we, we hear often folks think it's cheaper to develop in the county, which is completely incorrect because although the raw land might be a little bit cheaper, you've still got to provide for your water, you've got to drill a well, you've got to provide for your sewer, you've got to build a septic system.
Pay frontage.
And the road miles are between homes or developments are a lot longer. And so the road is more costly than development. So it's not cheaper to build in the county, in my opinion.
Final change or addition is just, I put in a note about the residence, non-residential uses are assumed to be the same in each scenario. And this is how they were allocated in terms of employees and the developed acres for these different uses. And those could change with any scenario.
So, yeah, other questions for Tim?
I was just going to make, once, years ago, there was a study on the valley based on the farm ground. Partner next to me brought this up, based on the value of farm ground versus the unvalue of farm ground, meaning it's not very good. Almost wonders to me if we're doing this in preservation of open space and farming, back to Brady's point, that the bonus point comes based upon, or there's a look at that, if we're doing this to preserve agriculture, do we reward based on the clustering or do you reward on the production value of the land?
That's fair. I mean, Nibley City had, they have a big development, the Visionary Homes did out in Nibley. And there's this huge city park area that they donated that land to the city. Well, it's all wetlands. And so it's going to cost the city a ton of money to even turn that into a park. So they don't appreciate that donation of this huge area.
That they couldn't develop to begin with. Yeah.
You, you could have a scale. I mean, you could have, you could have prime ag land as, as a.
See, and that's what I'm saying, is a consideration.
You could say, what, what is that open space going to be used for in that thirty year period, whatever it is?
If it's a sagebrush piece, I'm not too excited about.
Could be different thing.
But supply and demand is going to change that just like it has with hay. You used to differentiate if hay tested, you got a lot more money for it versus rained on hay.
Now if it's just green, you get.
Now you're getting the same price for regardless. And I don't see how you're going to differentiate land any different.
But maybe, but maybe.
Well, some communities already do based on if you got irrigated land versus dry farm.
Well, it reminds me, you know, like of the, the LISA program that's in place that, you know, can give you a score on a piece of ground in terms of how valuable it is for farming or whatever. And you could easily create a density bonus or incentive that was on a scale. You get more bonus for preserving the higher quality.
Irrigated ground.
Or something irrigated versus non-irrigated and the soil types and that sort of.
I mean, like Wellsville's annexation route, if you're under the Wellsville irrigation part, the density is less than if you're in a dry farm area, then the density goes bigger because they're like, well, this is.
Might as well be houses because it's not great for.
Bingo. It's not as much productive stuff. So LISO or irrigated or whatever. I just think it'd be something that's a consideration or thoughts to it.
Yeah.
One, one quick thought. We talked about hamlets and maybe, you know, we cluster and we have, have a little group of, group of homes there. One thing, one thing that can offset the cost of all of this is, is commercial development. And, and I wonder if that's something, and I know you have some stuff as far as what commercial goes where and all of that, but I wonder about that. If, if there's some bonus for that, we can put a maverick. Where that, where that cluster of development is, there's going to be one in every corner eventually anyway. But, you know, that's a, that's also something as we, as we look at future expansion in, in the valley, does allowing a certain level of, of commercial development, even dispersed out through the valley, does that make sense? One, to provide services, but two, to provide, to provide tax revenue to subsidize the development.
You get enough rooftops in an area, maybe, and that compared with trips going by a busier road could bring a, even just a more neighborhood commercial element. That probably wouldn't compete with the scale of Logan and so forth, but it would be a nice element.
As we look at this, you know, you know, what's our pattern of development going to be as, I mean, even today, who wants to drive on Main Street in Logan? And so, and so as, as we look at this, well, it's expensive to develop, to build infrastructure and all of those things. Houses don't pay much. Commercial development pays. Now that's, I don't want to see sprawl all over out there, but I think this could be part of the equation. But if we're planning on clustering, we look at communities and say, well, there's a certain percentage of, of commercial development there that, that would make sense to offset all of the, all of the costs that go into that.
Or density bonus to encourage it potentially.
So Tim, what were you looking for tonight? Just the.
Yeah.
Presentation and, I mean, it, it, you know, the, the, the documents you've provided to us to review are still evolving, right? There's still information being provided. But, so I wasn't sure that you were looking for us to pass those along to the council at this point.
Well.
Were you?
I would say that this report minus the appendices or minus appendix A with maybe some added conclusions based on the discussion this evening and clarity and correctness corrections, I feel is there, practically there. Appendix A needs, needs to be updated to reflect all of the, the evolving components of the model. So if you felt as a commission that this is ready enough to polish up and refine to take to council with your comments incorporated into this, then we could recommend that you recommend this to the council for approval. If you feel you'd like to see one more polish and have it brought back to you, then we could do that as well. It will not be drastically different.
I mean, I personally like to see a finished product, but that's just me. What, how do you, other folks feel?
I mean, I guess my challenge on this is I, you know, I didn't know it was there until I, until Linda told me tonight.
I have no idea.
I really haven't had a chance to thoroughly review it. I, I think, I like the direction it's going, but I really haven't had a chance to dive in and.
Did we get the northern communities updated that had sewer systems? That was, that was a huge disappointment, I'll be honest to you. And all the time and effort that everybody's put into this, how that was overlooked.
And that was on the one we already sent forward.
Yeah, that, that should be updated.
That was a very disappointing thing to me, just saying like, you guys just spent this much time and you didn't catch that there's two systems in the north with sewer in them? But anyhow.
Yeah, the email updating you that this was available Monday did not make it to you.
That's part of Appendix A, Brady.
Is it?
The sewer that listed, are you talking about this part?
Lewiston and Richmond. Did not list Lewiston and Richmond, right?
So that has not been updated?
This is Appendix A that he's still working on, for sure, that you're doing.
And I think you're talking about regional collaboration plan that's moved on to council. In terms of his disappointment and some omissions, I believe that was in the regional collaboration plan that needed updating there. Anyway, happy to keep polishing and bring it to you.
When can you have finished documents?
Definitely by next meeting. This is, this has been, your poem really resonated with me in terms of the, the hours worked.
Rest?
But yeah, this, this is, this is an overtime effort, and I'm looking forward to it moving on and finalizing, but...
You know, I, I do think Melinda's point, that Appendix A does not, is not accurate. It also does not acknowledge that there are sewer systems in Richmond and Lewiston. So be sure that part of those changes are reflected in.
I think Providence wasn't listed on there anywhere either.
They dumped in the Logan.
We'll, we'll keep after it, yep.
Maybe commissioners, what do you think? Let's, why don't we open up the public hearing and see, and see if anybody's here to make comment on any of this or not?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in second to open a public hearing to discuss components of the Cache County General Plan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Well, you two gentlemen in the back, are you here to comment or opine on any of the discussion that's happened over the last hour or so? Feel, feel free, you'll have to come up to the microphone, even with just a question. State your name for us.
Thanks for your time, I'm Zan Summers. I was just curious, is this available online for the public yet?
Great question.
So we can find it online, even in the middle of you guys working on it? Okay, thank you.
Tim, can you help Zan understand where to find it?
Yes, media packet for the planning commission meeting. And then we're, we're keeping the most current general plan documents in a folder that is available through the Development Services website. Under the general plan, there's a link to the current general plan documents. And we're doing our best to make those easier and easier to find, so, yep.
And a recording of, of this meeting, if you're so inclined to be bored out, bored out of yours, is, is available on the county's YouTube channel as well.
Okay, anyone else, comments, opinions?
We have a motion to close the public hearing?
We have a motion in second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, so seems like we're interested in seeing a final product, maybe at the next meeting, on these documents, right?
Nolan, is this close enough to what you think the council's going to want to see? Is there still too much variation, variable in it?
Me, it's still open. I'd like to see, just like Jason pointed out, are there areas about septic tanks? Are there areas about if, water to me is huge?
I don't think even mark areas, I just think you add those as requirements if, if they're wanting to do something. Maybe a size, yeah, if there's going to be ten or more homes clustered, these studies need to be done for, to show there's water, show that septic tanks are working. So I don't think we have to say different areas in the county, because at some point, it's going to apply everywhere in the county.
Bingo.
Well, that'd be part of the ordinance though, not the general plan. Like, isn't this more, isn't this meant to be theoretical? And then the ordinance is where we would put those requirements, that they have to prove that there's water.
Yeah, I think Nolan's point is, there should be some discussion about those.
Very much so.
Some discussion and probably some conclusions.
Yeah, I mean, some guidance. I mean, you could say, here's what we're thinking. Or, for instance, just like Will Atkins talked about, you build so many houses in Box Hiller County, you got to do a water study. You build so many houses in a certain area, do we require water study? I think it would be prudent, as well as a septic tank, those type of things, and seeing what goes on there. We already go to the cities and everything else, but I think we really need to look at the impact of, if I'm clustering, when does Mendon's fire department, when does so many houses outreach what fire department can handle from Mendon? Or other things, those are things that I look at as well. Does that make sense? I mean, we're already having troubles with, you know, volunteers and everything else. And we throw thirty houses out there and, and they're close. Do we also, I mean, yes, we ask the fire department to look at that, but all of those things. So I'm just saying, just some guidance, so we have that.
It's very helpful feedback, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I wonder on those, I, I get that you say, okay, if you have fifteen homes, then you have to do a study. So I see, not that they would, but I see developers coming in and doing fourteen homes, so they don't have to do it. And then they do fourteen right next to it, and then fourteen, you know, another fourteen.
So what's the threshold?
To stay under it, yeah, so do you have like, a land area? Well, in this land area, you're, I don't know, something. I mean, we have the same thing with sheds in our, you know, in our city. If you build one under two hundred square feet, you don't need a building permit.
They get three over the backyard.
So they just stack them next to each other, it looks all trashy, but they didn't, they never had to get a building permit. And they might connect them too.
No, developers would never chain...
No, I didn't mean to accuse that.
They would never chain projects together.
So something to consider, that's, that's what we'd be looking at.
Yeah, I'm actually, we look forward to, I feel very clear feedback.
You got the feedback you needed? I think we look forward...
I really liked it, Tim. I love the, yeah, the bars of the different types of housing and the amounts and I, yeah, I can't wait to show that to you.
Either way we develop, we're going to have farmland for at least one hundred years. It might be really small pieces, but if we go to that clustered one, we can get two hundred years out of what we've got left. If we stay at the same growth rate for two hundred years.
Tim, maybe just one last minor comment on the, on the table there. It's not clear to me how many housing units total are in each scenario. Are they the same? Or, I mean, I would assume they're close.
They are.
A total of housing units, or a, a statement somewhere in there that says each scenario has the same number of housing units?
Yep.
Would, would be helpful. Okay. Anything else for staff on this subject?
No, Tim's put an awful lot of time into this. I, there's too many scenarios there for me to get a good vision of it all, but that's...
I promise you'll have more time to read for next time, so thank you. And in terms of, should this hearing then be tabled, continued to apply to next month? A continued, this item continues, then we wouldn't necessarily need to renotice? And we, we could announce that it's happening, but just save us a little public noticing effort if that was continued?
So i- if that's going to be the proposal, then I would suggest that we continue it up to ninety days or something to that effect, just for whatever.
That way they can come back to it next month or...
Or if they need a little bit more time or whatever.
Next month.
Does that make sense?
You want to get it out of your hair.
Yeah, hey, you're welcome to do it faster, like we tell everybody that we continue, you know, you can do it faster, but... If you want to, if you want us to say thirty days, you better darn sure, make sure you're done in thirty days. We'd rather give you more time than less.
Ninety's smart.
We, we okay to take a comment from Zan?
Just a comment, your playing office is awesome, Angie is awesome. She's looking out for you guys. She's, all that stuff you're worried about, she's on it.
Thank you. Thanks for that.
Pay him when he goes online to just email that out to five other people, so we double our attendance here.
I'm going to play this clip though, over.
We did double our attendance, because last time we just had the Alan Lauer, and this time we had two people.
See, we're moving.
We doubled our population. So anything else, Tim? Okay, and then Angie, I would just ask, what does next month's agenda look like?
I have a couple of rezones, the Mount, Nealee, Linder, ECU. I saved one rezone, a couple subdivisions, and then a couple more extension requests on the first consideration.
I will be gone, I will be out of town.
And I did follow up on our package with the reindeer, the question about the...
I did see that.
Yeah, the letter.
Hopefully that answered your question.
It did, but you still had people in that open meeting who made comments against that and had positions, and that's why we said that. So my point was, before we just fluff that off to what the owner said, that those who made comments against it also have the ability to say something about it. Does that make sense? I mean, we had two people that I, that I know of who made comments on that and had concerns. And just as this person said in your material that they had data, so did the other people. So to me, it didn't rest it until you hear from the other side.
So you do another public hearing?
I don't know. I mean, the point was in that it was discussed that that manure had to be hauled away. Now they're saying it doesn't, but yet there was enough evidence brought up that that was said in the planning and zoning, yes, it'd be helped, it'd be hauled away. So I don't think the owner, just them saying, I did a study, so I didn't have to do it based on what planning and zoning said, until you say that the other people who brought their concerns up are addressed as well. That's my point.
Yeah, the CUP that got passed said you're hauling it away, right?
Exactly. So just them...
That's what stands.
Just them coming back and saying, well, I've done these studies, but so did the other people. So I'm saying that doesn't alleviate them of that obligation just because they're discussing and have found...
So is that a pending item to amend the...
I don't know, I didn't see it in here.
I thought it was just part of the discussion.
It was on last month's agenda for an extension of the existing...
Yeah, because they have to either meet those conditions or reapply, don't they?
Was that a condition, or was that just in the discussion and it didn't actually make it a condition?
I thought it was ju, I don't think it's a condition.
It's not.
And so I don't think, yeah, I...
So that's where it's sticking.
That's where I think that letter...
Did somebody go back and look at that for sure?
They're on pasture, it's not really a way to haul that off. Especially when you feed them in the winter, I mean, it's spread across the pasture, you can't go vacuum it up and haul it off. It's, it's little pellets like you get from sheep. I don't haul my sheep manure off, it stays out in the pasture.
I make my children go pick it up. Put it in the garden.
You didn't charge the child abuse too?
Okay, anything else?
I think just one item for your awareness. There is a rezone application that we've received, and there's been some discussion with the applicant for some time. And unfortunately, this map is hard to read. At any rate, it's an area just north of the airport, west of Hyde Park, south of Smithfield. And these are areas where both communities are kind of, in the general planning and annexation plans have industrial areas and commercial areas planned to be, extend towards the airport. And I think they were, this particular applicant was anticipating that area to have, and we do show in our future land use map for the draft plan, industrial. It's in fact the only new industrial area in the county. And they had anticipated that that would be a little larger than it is. And so they anticipate showing up to the city council hearing on the thirteenth of September and suggesting that that be a little larger.
You're talking to CRA? So we did? We talking to CRA?
No.
Study the airport, east or west?
North.
North, the airport?
The airport, so here's the airport, and you see a little, I don't know if you can see that blue right there, but that's kind of the pocket where our general plan recommends future industrial. And they had suggested that that, that they were looking at property within that area, and it's...
The property they can buy is not quite in the area, so they won't...
Can you expand that a little bit?
I'm going to do my best to expand it.
But we could look at it on the parcel viewer, couldn't we?
Yes.
Well, I'm telling you, Hyde Park has, we have all of our residential on the east, and our commercial, and the airport. And then we have this area that can be annexed on the other side of the airport, but we only have this little sliver of land to get to all of that land over here because of the airport. And so where you're pointing at to me is that little sliver, which is our only access.
So why are they promoting expansion of industrial uses in the county as opposed to simply incorporating into the city?
It's showing up better now.
City there, yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right, and I think it, well, and it might have something to do with where the sewer service could extend to without pumping it back to the east, I think is part of that.
Yeah, we worry about that west side, if we'll be able to service it without pumps.
And, and so they're looking at an area up, up as far as up in here. And so this is actually, this, this hatched area is shown as the future industrial land use, where this is actually airport use, this, this blue. And I think there was a little confusion that they thought, we, we thought we were addressing their property here, so they would just like that blue to expand to the north, further than it is.
That blue, just like, I mean, I'm trying to think, is the airport just its own zone?
Well, it's, the gray is in Logan and the blue is in county, but it is all the airport.
Are you able to overlay what they're talking about, the CRA going out there?
I'll have to produce a little map that shows it in...
I mean, how contiguous, is it contiguous, or what's going on there?
I'm going to have to produce a map, so I appreciate you mentioning that, and we'll, we'll show it clearly on the thirteenth.
Is that part of Smithfield's annexation?
It's just south, just south of it.
Our, our annexation zone, because we border Smithfield?
It is, they've received a letter from both cities suggesting that there would be supportive of the rezone and the development there. So you'll see this as a rezone request next month. And depending on how council takes action or not on the general plan, may determine you have the timing with which you'd like to focus on it. This is FYI.
I have a question. I don't recall hearing a motion to continue the item, did you make a motion and I just missed it?
No, we haven't done that yet.
Keep us on track, because we got to get out of here.
By six.
So Nolan, the council is, is working through the general plan now?
Yes. I don't know that it'll pass this next time, I mean, there were some questions, it probably will. I don't think there was any stumbling block on it, so...
Okay.
There will be this requested map amendment.
How about a motion to continue item number four up to ninety days?
So moved?
Second.
You beat your lane. So we have a motion in second to continue the Cache County General Plan, item number four, as pertains the urban and rural areas assessment and cost of services plan for up to ninety days. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, that's it. Is that all the business we need to take care of tonight? Okay, if so, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you, commissioners.